We'll start with a pledge of allegiance that I would ask also that when we finish that, you stay standing for a moment of silence for former city manager Brian Searls, who was here back in the early 2000s. He'll bask away recently. So we'll start with a pledge of allegiance, and then we'll do a moment of silence.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Thank you. So next on the agenda is a public comments period. I would share with everyone that I'm not sure what the topic is other than maybe public safety. But I would make everyone aware that we have a public forum scheduled for Tuesday night, where we will have Representative Mike McCarthy, Bram Hutzfield from our state's attorney at the courthouse, myself, what else about that?
Senator Lawrence. See your fingerprints?
Chief of Police.
Our Chief of Police.
And our Corso's interventions.
Yes, so, but if there's...
Tuesday, 18th.
So June 18th.
Tuesday, 18th, in this auditorium from 6:00 to 8:00. If people have a comment you'd like to make, we ask that to come up to the table, sign in, state your name, and limit your comments to two minutes if we could. So is there any public comment?
Someone will be signed in. My name's Phil Belmore. I live on Lower Diamond Street. I can't speak for everyone here, but I think a good majority of us know that we don't have much time to speak tonight. But we're here as a show of unity, that the crime situation in St. Albans, particularly the judicial process and the judges involved are completely unacceptable. We know there's mitigating factors, prisons are full, existing law. At some point though, that's not enough. And we're having just a rampant situation in St. Albans. So you just wanted to make sure that you guys know that we're here as a show of unity.
Appreciate that.
Thanks, Bill.
Are there those that would like to speak?
Well, there's other names on the list, so who else wants to speak?
We all thought we had a second.
Okay, I'm here to address the homelessness.
State your name, please.
Kelly Greeno. I'm here to state the homelessness problem we have. Now that ten city has been taken care of, they seem to be spreading all over. I have an encampment behind my house now, which makes my neighborhood not safe at all.
And your address is?
117 Henley Avenue. They're living in the back entrance of the industrial park. There's a fork that runs along around there. You can clearly see where they come and go. Cars stop, somebody runs to the woods, they come back, they leave, another car comes in. So, and I have a child down there, and I'm highly concerned for her and her future and any child's future in this town. This is not how we operate city movements.
Appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I just got to sign up first there. So my name's Michael Burby. I live very close to the first gentleman that got up to speak. I live on Lincoln Avenue. So also with the crime and drug problems and so forth. Obviously, you know, there's certain streets that are really the helps for traffic going through. The first gentleman lives one house away from a house that's known as a drug house that's been raided already. Everybody parks on my street to go down there. I don't hide from them. I stand by them. I go see their cars. I follow them down there. Mind you, in 2020, I had people vandalizing my house every night, slashing tires, keying cars. I stopped one of them. They were not charged with vandalism, theft, or trespass. I was charged with aggravated assault. So as a warning for the public, when you go to stand up for yourself, we may be together, but the other side is not. They're gonna make you pay for it. It's not the police, they're doing a wonderful job. I have 4K cameras all over my house, including other Ring doorbells and other stuff. The police come to my house all the time asking for footage, because I have a 24-hour loop on my 4K cameras. Hey, we think the person that broke into the gas station may have come by between such and such a time. I pull footage for them. So as part of the community that is just absolutely with the rest of them and is sick of all this happening, you're, not you as individuals, but as a process, you're forcing the public to be victims. I will not be a victim, and I will not let them be victims. We're not gonna stop watching what these people are doing, following them around. It may get us in trouble, but we're not going anywhere. We are the taxpayers. I assure you, the criminals going around are not paying that much in taxes. Would anybody agree with that? So I'm glad there's more people here and that, you know, this stuff is coming out more, and I hope we can get somewhere with it, with your help. So please, thank you.
Thank you.
I'm Nina Fitzgerald, and I live on Congress Street. And I just wanted to come tonight, because in May, mid-May, my friend and I were walking up Congress Street from downtown, and we found a little plastic bag with white powder in it. And immediately, we recognized that it must have been some kind of, you know, illegal substance. So we picked it up, because it was in front of a house where we knew there were children, and we didn't want to just leave it on the floor. So we picked it up, and right away, we called the non-emergency police number. And the dispatcher said, please don't pick it up, but we already had. So there was a concern for our well-being. So we put it down on the floor, and we waited for a police officer to come. And the officer came, put on gloves, picked it up, and looked at it and said, I'm familiar with this. And, you know, thanked us for calling, and we walked home. I was just about a half a block from my home where this was found. And it wasn't the first time that drug or drug paraphernalia has been seen in public places. Needles, used needles in front of Walgreens and things like that. And just as a, as a community member, as a school teacher, I'm just concerned. I echo what everyone has said so far. I'm very concerned about the drug issue, the homelessness, vandalism, the robberies. And just last Thursday, I was robbed in my own driveway at 7:45 in the morning on my way to school. So it's a big concern.
Can you elaborate?
How do you mean robbed? I was leaving my house to get in my car. I had just opened my car, unlocked it. My husband pulled it out of the garage. And so it was unlocked for about 10 minutes, and a woman had been in my car. She was, I saw her, and I yelled, who are you? And she said, oh, I'm just passing through. And I said, no, you're not. And I said, get off my property. And just beyond my shrubs, she had an e-bike parked in my neighbor's driveway, and she sped off down Prospect Street. And when I inspected my car, she had taken some, you know, like little petty cash that I had for quarters and things like that. So she was in my vehicle, she stole from us, and she was on our property. And what concerned me was that my car was unlocked for about 10 minutes. So I feel that she may have been watching our property, knowing when the car was put in the driveway and unlocked. And she had been, the same individual was recorded on a Ring doorbell at my neighbor's the week prior and had stolen from them as well. So it's just, it's a real big concern.
Thank you for that. Ma'am.
My name is Donna George. I live in the apartments next to Collins, Pearlie. And I'm a woman alone, and I would like to be able to walk these streets without having my head on a swivel, having to watch who's coming up behind me, who's gonna grab my purse, who's gonna knock me over. And right now, I don't feel safe walking these streets in St. Albans as I have in the past. Something has to be done about that. There's a lot of women alone in this town.
Thank you. Anyone else?
I'll sign here right after. Nick Whitten, I live at 43 Messenger Street. I'm not typically one to come to these meetings unless it's something, you know, really important and it really warrants the time, I guess, to come and just hear what the pulse is in the city on any given topic. And this is one, I think, that's kind of been accumulating over the past year, maybe a little bit more. And the one positive swing I can say in the past, I would say, four months is that at least kind of in a unanimous way, St. Albans residents are saying, okay, there's a problem. But up until about four months ago, it was very much a polarized political topic. And if you go on the, you know, the Facebook groups and you go on the forums, you'd have a good amount of people that would say, this is nothing like a big city. It's safe compared to their, you know, statistically, anyone should feel safe in their homes. And meanwhile, robberies, drug busts, gun, you know, busts, and collection of dozens of, you know, semi-automatic guns in drug houses, brought, you know, stores being robbed in broad daylight, stores being, you know, walls smashed in, doors smashed in, ATMs stolen. This is, this is the type of stuff that happens in bigger cities, and now it's become a norm in this city. And when per capita, when you look at the number of residents and taxpayers compared to the crime rate, it's pretty alarming. The police are right out straight. And, you know, so a lot of the crimes that are maybe, they're more proactive kind of crime prevention, like speeding, stuff like that, like there's been a lot of speeding down the side streets. It's always been an issue in St. Albans, but recently, there's been a lot of close calls. On my street alone, this past summer, we had somebody who had robbed a store, and he was fleeing the police in a pickup truck. And he came around Brainerd on a messenger, and he was doing about 65 miles an hour. His truck fishtailed, there were three kids playing in the yard, and he straightened out, shot right through two trees, and missed a duplex that was across the street by about six inches. Could've killed kids, could've ruined a house, I mean, multiple persons could've been injured. He ditched the truck while it was still in drive, and it like crashed into the people's backyard, and then ran, and then the police chased him and got him in the Walgreens parking lot, drug alley. I can say the drug problem in St. Albans is the crux of all of this. You fix the drug problem, you fix the crime. They're correlative. I lost a sister this past year due to an overdose. It affects every family in this state. And for those who think that, you know, the intervention for, like, you know, treatment, drug treatment centers, that that's the crux of the issue, they're right. But the problem is, we stopped arresting these people. And we cite them, we release them, and they continue to use. My sister would be alive if she'd have been arrested and had any type of prison sentence, three months, six months, and they would, she would've been brought to the front of the list for treatment within prison. She could've detoxed. She'd still be alive. I, I, there's no doubt about it. She had a bad, bad episode six years ago, got arrested, got clean, six years, six solid years of her life that we had her, and she was clean, working, productive member of society. Stuff happens, she fell right back into it. But the point is, is that if you let these folks go right back out on the street two hours after they get arrested, you're just asking for them to continue to use and to continue to commit crimes and continue to put themselves and everybody in the community at risk. And that's exactly what's happening. It's a rotating door at that courthouse. And you're not servicing them any more than you're servicing the taxpayers in the community. If that doesn't stop, people are gonna start dropping. I mean, it's just, it's inevitable, it's cumulative, and it's accumulating towards something really bad. And we're all gonna be witness to it, and hopefully, you know, we can do some things to try to quell it a little bit. I think the whole community, though, finally come into terms with the fact that there's a problem, is the first step. Now how do we fix it?
Very, very good. Thank you.
Personally, I think all the murders we've had in Vermont alone should've started making us address this. This is, this was a problem that started 10 years ago. Nobody wanted to actually see it. They just wanted to deny it.
Hi, I've already signed in. My name is Kate Cook, and I live at the Congress Street Apartments. I've been there for four and a half years, and it's, it's terrible, especially in the last six months, a year, it's really doubled and horrible. It's just so many people around there. I'm sorry, I'm nervous, but it's just, I have friends that have cameras, and they watch these actions on these cameras that are in their own property. And it's terrible. The garage, all the time, we have that red house next door that is, in my opinion, is just a drug-fested place, and it's just, they're, and we have rights to friend who we want, but they friend them and go over, and it's just all the time. Downstairs garage door to the garage is always left open, so people can get in, any, these strangers, anybody. We've had people sleeping in the hallways in the past. Just recently, we've heard that there was needles in the wash, in the laundry, in one of the washers. And we have not a whole ton of children in the Congress Street Apartments, but one is too many to get involved into drugs. So it's just terrible. And there's actually a lady that lives in there, she's new, and I think she's been taken advantage of from these people that are, they're stealing from her, and, because she's vulnerable. She's very vulnerable. And so, yeah, it just, yeah. And I wanna say thank you to the city police, to what they do, very, they do what they can, and that's it. So, yeah, I just, I mean, between all of us, I think we could do something for sure, definitely. Thank you.
My name's Carl Kirby. I own a residence down on Pearl Street. I've been in this town, back in this town about 23 years, 23 years. A little nervous myself, but I brought my daughter here to show her how certain changes need to be, so you have to be proactive and, you know, go into the situation. I used to brag to old friends, because I come from Phoenix, where this kind of crime is really small, but compared to the scale on a, people of Phoenix, you know. So I explained to my friends that Vermont's a safe place to raise your kids. St. Albans was slow, it was easygoing, everybody friendly. In the last, I'd say, year, we, we don't even go or take part in the parks anymore. The parks are riddled with all kinds of stuff from the drugs, trash everywhere, not to mention parking your car, you gotta leave your car, you come back, windows are broken. So unfortunately, it, things don't change regardless of what I do for pay taxes. I'm considering taking a loss on my property just to move out of the city. I don't know what else can be addressed or said to the people that do it, but I don't know how many people are here are homeowners, who are comparten residents, or, you know, renters, but it's gotten completely out of hand to where we have to lock everything up in our own yard or our own sheds and, you know, I'm with the other gentleman. I've upgraded my security system like crazy. I've had law enforcement stop by, they've gotten several footages off my cameras. But how far does it go? You got the video proof of whatever, then the person's released hours later after they're caught. But if one of us had been, like the guy said, takes it into our hands, I will be on the news if somebody comes in my house, you can guarantee that, because, you know, when it's your home and you have kids, that's all there is to be said. But when you take residents of the town and make it to where we feel like no matter what is being done, the reward for these individuals is release? Okay, here you go. There was one I saw in there, she had 88 run-ins with the law enforcement this year alone. Eighty-eight? I mean, if that's not a problem, you know what I mean, why that person is even walking the streets of this town?
Is that informant?
You know, informant or not, I mean, just because you rat on somebody doesn't entail you freedom to do whatever you want to everybody else's, you know? An old gentleman robbed for what, 20 bucks? You know, like, and like the guy said, when something happens and one of us turn on said individuals, it's not gonna be that said individual that has anything to worry about. They've got nothing to lose. But yeah, us family members, active members of society, doing what we're supposed to do. When our hands are tied, they come untied really quick when it comes to your own home. And I can assure you, all of you would relate to that same situation. If this was to happen in your front yard, backyard, neighbors, a loved one's home, you guys would all have that same feeling. So I don't know what else to really say on the topic, but I'm definitely gonna make the next meeting and hope to see what, you know, kind of brainstorms or conclusion can be made to make this a lot better place than what it is now.
Thank you. Appreciate that. Is there anyone else?
Hi, my name is Deb Lawrence, and I live down on Spruce Street. And I know we're dealing with a lot of stuff going on with adults and drugs and stealing, and we also need to get a handle on the kids. We got a group of, a gang, I'm calling them, down on Spruce and LaSalle, who threaten us. I'm a single female. They walk past my house, I was having lunch the other day on my deck. They had so many languid words for me that were disrespectful and rude. They were throwing food on my property, they were spitting on my driveway, whatever they had been drinking that they got from Spectrum. We need to start with the younger kids too, because if we don't start addressing what they're doing. And there's 10 to 15 of them. Two or three of them have bikes. There are three or four females, it's always the same group. They will not let me, I go up to the gym Tuesdays and Thursdays mornings at around 7:05. Bus hasn't come yet, they block me. They will not let me pass in my vehicle to get to my gym class. It's not okay. Something needs to be done with the younger generation so we don't end up with them being adults doing what's going on right now. And the police have been called, and they don't come. I know they are tapped out, I get it. We need to do something to help them so that they can keep us safe. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Name is Caleb Byerly, signed the form here. I live on Federal Street, I've lived there for about past 15 years or so. I have been witness and victim to crime such as vandalism, theft, drug abuse, drug use. I watched my neighbor's house become raided because of obvious drug dealing during one of the massive raids that occurred throughout the Northeast. I decided that I wanted to do what I could outside of the permissions of the city government. I put in cameras in our property. I have taken walks around the city just today, just to take a look at what is the condition of the city. I took a walk past the high school. I encountered two people of the demographic that everybody before here has been discussing. And one of the people asked if I had anything to smoke for them. I said, I'm sorry, I do not. They told me to go F myself. I gladly went on my way. I took a walk up to Lincoln Avenue just to see what all the, all the posts on social media have been about. And during that walk, I noticed a lot of dark areas. And dark, I mean physically dark. There are trees that have low-hanging branches that block out any street light. Now, most safes, most security apparatus or most security tips that you can get is to park your car in a well-lit area. The victims of Lincoln Ave. don't have that. And that's a, that's a thing that the city can't address if they have the will to do it. And I think this meeting should highlight that there is a desire that the city handled this. Along that walk today, I witnessed a woman traveling with my stolen bike. And I considered confronting her about it, but what would that have done? Is it stealing if I steal my bike back? Especially in raw daylight? Big, tall guy going up to a female, ripping the bike out of her hand because it belongs to me? Probably wouldn't have gone well for me, I'm sure. What can I do? It's just a bike, I can let it go. That's the city I live in, that's how it is now. Does it have to be that way? No. I think there's something I can do. I think I can chop down some trees, I can chop down some branches to let in light, I can do that. If you've got a messy yard, I can help you clean it up. I'll do what I can. I can't handle needles in the yard, I don't fix that. That's for the police, they're doing what they can. I can report. What do they want? They want who, what, where, when, and why? Maybe they'll arrest them, maybe they won't, but at least the information is there. So for all the people who are here, I will say that I'm willing to work with everybody here. If you wanna network with me, I'm happy to get the conversation started, we'll make a plan. If it's lighting the city hall, I'm happy to work with anybody here who thinks they can get it done. If it's cleaning up your yard, just to kind of give a free flow of vision, line of sight for your stuff, I'm happy to help out in any way I can. And I would like to see more of this, if possible. I won't be able to make the next meeting, but I'll do my best. You know, I still have to work, and everybody else here, I'm sure, has full-time jobs, you know? I'd like to see a solution. What it is, I don't know. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else like to speak?
My name is Lori Baker, and I live on Congress Street at the new apartment building. Before I moved in there, I also experienced homelessness. And when I got the apartment there, one of the things that pleased me the most, because I'm a single woman, and it says right on the thing about the apartment, it's supposed to be a secure building. But if you don't have a key or haven't been buzzed in because you were invited, you don't get in. About a year ago, I got a little, a little dog, companion dog, and things have gotten to the point in the last... And things have gotten to the point in the last year, eighteen months, I dread the evening walk the most, but it's not always just at night. People will vulture around the entrances waiting to tailgate you in. And if you try to confront them, some people just take it, walk away, others don't. And especially in the evenings for that last dog walk of the night. And I go to open the door and there's a gentleman that wants to tailgate in. I find myself not saying anything because I'm afraid. And I've lived in St. Albans thirty years. And the last year is the, really the first time that I've felt that unsafe. And i- it's gotten, as I said, it's gotten to be a cumulative problem that just keeps getting worse and worse. And here we're supposed to be living in a secure building and certainly not, certainly not.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Hi, I'm Sang Dan Alredy, my name is Courtney Cadre and I live down on LaSalle Street. I'm actually a new resident to Vermont. I've been traveling to Vermont since twenty eighteen as a travel nurse, um, originally from Michigan. My first travel opportunity was Baltimore, Maryland. I left there pretty quickly, told my agency to get me somewhere safe. He said, well, how about Vermont? I said, where the hell is Vermont? So here I am and, um, I have a very hard time leaving here, which is why I chose to take a permanent position, um, and remain here. Living down on LaSalle Street, not too far from Spruce, where this lovely lady has a hard time leaving her driveway in the morning with a gang of kids. Um, I know exactly the kids that she's speaking of, one of them flashed a gun while I was driving down the road. Um, I called the police. Sure, and this is not at all negative towards the police, but maybe twenty minutes later did they show up, not sure where the kid went with the gun. Um, either way, even if they were there within five minutes, probably nothing could have been done. Because there is a huge problem with our judicial system here. We have a gentleman who drives a parking lot at Food City. A little light blue Saturn, and I have him on video, barely walking. Gets into his vehicle, speeds through the parking lot doing donuts, speeds through now the open field, it's a field now where they tore down the trees, we are one house away from this parking lot, okay? So we get front view, front row view. And then he's driving up the street where there are six kids that live in a three apartment building or across the street from us. They're always out there just living an innocent childhood dream, playing all the time outside, one of them are gonna get hit. And just like another gentleman, I may be on the news one day too. Because if I see a child hurt by one of these people who are breaking the law, that keep getting away and they're not getting locked up, and the police have every, so much evidence to lock them up, I will go after them myself, I will. And that's okay, like I said, I gave you my name, mark my words. It's only gonna get worse. This town unfortunately is behind the ball, way behind the ball. It's only going to get worse, I have lived in so many areas, so many states, so many cities. And it's unfortunate, and I'm questioning my move here to St. Albans, here to Vermont. Because this is not what it was like when I started coming here in twenty eighteen, and it's gotten worse the last year that I've been here, ten times worse. We call the police all the time, we saw, we saw the city police there yesterday in the parking lot, two of the officers. They left, took care of whatever business need, need to take care of, then three state police show up, a Franken County County and a city police show up. Took care of whatever business was going on. Didn't look like anybody got arrested, they drove off. Twenty minutes later, two city police are there and an ambulance. This is sickening. And this one guy who drives that little blue Saturn had just stolen from Hannaford's and from Tractor Supply and comes over to that parking lot driving donuts. I'm sorry? These residents have so much evidence against people that are committing crimes and nothing is being done. And again, I'm not blaming the police department, but you've got to do something now. We can't wait until there's new judges and new district attorneys, you've got to do something now, you have to, somebody's going to get killed. Innocent lives are gonna be taken. Because everybody's dragging their feet and blaming the judges.
And us as parents are telling us, let's go back to the eighties, get our kids back outside, they used to be back outside off their computers, off their gadgets. How about, no, they don't need to be back outside.
And I am more than happy to help you get out of your driveway. Otherwise, you'd drive with just going from Spruce to LaSalle.
I thank you though, I, I get out.
They cover the street.
Yeah, anywhere else. Thank you.
Thank you.
What time does that occur and what days is that?
The Tuesdays, it's every morning, but Tuesday and Thursday mornings about five after seven. When I am trying to get through.
And there are kids that hang out at Spectrum Youth Center, you believe?
I've seen them go to Spectrum, um, and I've seen them leave there in the evening at, with snacks and juice or whatever they get there. Um, and I've spoken to Stephanie and she's like, I know what you're talking about, but there's nothing she can do, apparently. They also went down one specific minority child too, they keep haunting him and hunting him down and chasing him out the street. That we are trying to go out there and mother and try to stand up for her.
So to observe it, I mean, it sounds like it's any, any given day around seven, right?
It's around, yeah, when they're waiting for the bus and then it's in the, as soon as school gets out, they congregate, as a matter of fact, right on the corner, Marie, what's the number of the gray one? The gray house?
Uh, twenty-seven North Elm.
Twenty-seven North Elm, they were, the other day, it was either Tuesday afternoon or Wednesday, they were doing a drug deal. There were two girls, um, there were two guys on bikes and there were two other males and they were doing something, passing little baggies and sticking them in their pockets. They're between thirteen and probably seventeen, I think.
So you, uh, elementary school kids or high school kids or both?
Both, yeah.
Well, if they're waiting for the bus, I would assume they're elementary school kids, but maybe with some high school kids.
They haven't gone to school yet, probably. Yes.
Is there anyone else I would like to, uh, comment?
I will mention what's sunshine, when it was in the cool, I've already signed it.
I just want to, I'm not gonna talk about all those things, what I want to reiterate and kind of drive home, for me, I live right next door to the guy who was raided and his father is a law enforcement official. And he is just full duck in that house, dealing his drugs all day, every day, all night, nothing is being done. My concern is, is that whoever he's working with, whoever he's working for, which is probably from the cities, they're taking note that Vermont is very soft on crime, we're not, we're not doing anything to these offenders. And they're gonna just continue to come here, because one, it's lucrative, and two, nothing's gonna happen to them. You know, they're not gonna get caught, they're not gonna become incarcerated. And I realize that there's a legislative, you know, issue and that we have to deal with the judiciary, but we need to be united in this voice to make this change because nothing is gonna happen, nothing is gonna change, it's just going to get worse. That's all I have to say.
Thank you. Anyone else? So I will, uh, I will speak for the entire council. We all, for the most part, are lifelong residents of St. Albans. We know what St. Albans used to be. We don't like where we are today, this is not the first time we've discussed it as a council. We've discussed this multiple times, we've had meetings. I looked to Marie. Marie said, the other day Marie said, two of the issues is we don't have consequences and we don't have accountability. I encourage all of you to make ten calls each to fill the auditorium Tuesday night. You will learn what we've learned, which is, as a council, as a police department, our hands are tied. It is legislative, it is judges, I'm not gonna back down on that. We need to get the message to our legislators. And if you know your legislator, I encourage you to call them and share these exact same stories with them, because they need to hear it. The Speaker of the House in Montpelier needs to hear it. Okay? We, we will be doing some stuff as a city. Come July one, we are bringing back the Street Crimes Unit, which was focused on drug use and drug distribution. We will be having them back on the street to try to impact this. But what you're gonna find out Tuesday night will be an eye opener for you. The state's attorney will explain exactly what they have to go through. This lady that you mentioned that's had eighty arrests. The police have been quiet over the last week because she finally ended up in jail. She had twenty-four citations in the month of April, she had seven on one Saturday. And the courts will not, unless they're a flight risk, will not incarcerate them. Finally, we have a judge here who's a little more aggressive and did incarcerate her. And we've seen a significant impact, positive impact on the community. We as a board, we as a council feel for all of you, we're all in the same boat. We've all en- encountered some type of, of violation to our homes, our properties, we're in the same boat. This is a message that has to get to Montpelier. We are, we will, we will convey that. I like the fact that there's so many people here willing to get engaged. And maybe we go back to the Neighborhood Watch in addition to, um, you know, more streetlights, we, we are open to everything. It may not be tomorrow, and the results may not be tomorrow or next week. But we will focus on what comes out of these meetings and improve St. Albans, you have our word for that. But at the same time, we need more people to come to these meetings. We need more people in city, in the, in the auditorium on Tuesday night. We need engagement. And I would say we haven't had engagement in the past. If there's a positive coming out of this, it's just that this right here, that you are all here. I've been mayor for six years and there's faces in this room that I don't think I've seen before. So I thank you for that, I appreciate the fact that you've come here doing that. But it's not gonna be this board, it's not gonna be our police department, it's gonna be everyone. And I appreciate the schools comment, because that's, I was gonna mention the city manager. We need to have the schools represented here on Tuesday night as well. Because there's, you know, we talked about the pendulum has swung so far, we need to bring that pendulum back in all aspects of society. The family, the schools, churches, this council, our police department. So I want to thank you all. We're not gonna come out of this meeting tonight with any solutions. We're gonna have a community forum on Tuesday, I expect that's gonna be packed, just get the word out. We are here to help and we will come up with some solutions. They may not be the end all, but we're gonna work with you to make things happen. Someone mentioned streetlights, I already had that conversation, Pine Street, there's darks, dark places on Pine Street or the fact that current street lights just aren't bright enough. And we need to, we need to make those changes. We have a lot of new faces that have come to St. Albans for a number of different reasons. I don't like the fact that we had to take a dugout down up at Barlow Street School and remove picnic tables. I don't like the fact that, uh, people don't like going to Food City after dark or even during the daytime. We need Food City, we need the laundromat as a community, and we cannot be overrun by these individuals. So show up on Tuesday night, listen to what's gonna be said, we're, we're trying to get a former judge there. I had talked to, a while back, two months ago, I said, why don't we get the judges around the table and talk to them? You know, so we can do that, judges aren't, judges aren't gonna come. I don't understand why we can't get the judges to the discussion and our legislations. And maybe it's gonna take a letter writing campaign to the judges, to the judi- judiciary and to the legislators across the state. So with that, thank you all. I deeply thank you for showing up, voicing your opinions, it's been wonderful. We, we will move on to the rest of our agenda, where, as I said, don't stick around thinking you're gonna hear some solutions, because you're not. This is gonna be a process where we're gonna focus and we will continue to work. We are all available for you, all of you for, uh, questions. How can you help out? How can you participate? We would love to have you.
And email Mike McCarthy and Casey too, I had long meetings with both of them and they were great and they were very, they're also very concerned. So the more people that they hear from, the more, um, voice they will have in Montpelier. And that's really where, um, some change needs to happen.
I'm curious if anybody has reached out to whoever the appropriate person would be about the apartment buildings, we have another unit coming up on Lake Street, which I feel would probably be even worse than twenty-one.
We, we met with the owner of the apartment house on Lake Street last week to have a discussion about, um, what, what he can be. Uh, one of his solutions was to have someone from NCSS present on site periodically to meet the folks. We talked about, uh, what the rent amount will be and who will be eligible for that. And many, many of them are working individuals, individuals who work at Ben &amp; Jerry's or Cal- well, uh, L and As at the hospital, the teacher just being hired. So we are, we, to reiterate, uh, this has been an ongoing discussion with the owner to get, to, um, to make sure he's aware of what our concerns are and that will continue as well.
I'd like to make a statement and I have a question. Not all drug users are people who do not work. There are drug users out there that do whole full time jobs so you can't put them on a category. Um, I also, um, heard that the apartment complex is being built on Lake Street is gonna house homes of homeless, some of the homeless, is that accurate?
Some people coming out of homelessness? But not homeless.
It's not gonna be a homeless shelter, there are units that are gonna have to favor people who are coming out of homelessness to give them a home.
I think process wise and demographically, the rent criteria will be similar to Congress Street, but it's different management.
Wouldn't it be easier to build a bigger homeless shelter where they're better managed and better controlled than giving them a?
The folks that, I, I believe that the folks that are, we're struggling with in our neighborhoods are people who aren't eligible to be in homeless shelters because they can't follow the expectations of the shelter.
I know several people that have gone to the shelter and end up either getting kicked out or leaving on their own because rules.
Yeah, so. So that wouldn't necessarily solve, that's what I can say.
So, uh, okay. Okay, well, it is, the folks that are homeless who are living wherever in, in town are not homeless. are not all drug addicts, they are not called criminals, they are not all the people that are talking about. And I think that we need a two-pronged approach. One, to deal with what folks are talking about here. But also, if we're gonna move forward and out of this situation, then we need to look at, um, the homeless people who are
Who deserve it.
Who are working, who are good citizens. And we also need to look at what we have here for substance abuse treatment, alcohol drugs, illegal drugs. So that we support people who are going to treatment when they return to the community.
The more united around things like that, the stronger it will be.
But remember that we are dealing with addicts. And addicts do abuse the system.
So folks, I wanna thank you for coming in, we appreciate you, and welcome to stick around if you want.
Uh, what today is against the next week?
Tuesday at eighteen.
Tomorrow, tomorrow, we've got the law.
Can you expect that?
It's all CH two.
All right, uh, Tom, we're gonna move on to item number four, which is the first reading for the affiliation ordinance appeal.
Well, it's an appropriate.
Let me back up. Either of you have a comment other than what's the topic? Okay, Tom, go ahead.
It's an appropriate segue, uh, for the conversation we just had, because one of the reasons we joined forces with the town of St. Albans was to achieve the economies of scale for a robust police department. Uh, and it's important that, right out of the gate, we brought back the Street Crimes Unit, so. To that end, this ordinance, um, is pretty historic, it repeals the affiliation fee. It's a simple ordinance that goes through and strikes all the different places where applicants for water and sewer allocation in the town need to come before the city. In the interest of time, I, I don't think we need to walk through all of the specific changes. I'm certainly glad to, uh, or answer any questions, but, um, this is the first reading tonight, we'll bring it back for second reading in the July meeting with any changes. We're gonna fight along the way.
I don't have any questions for Tom. The affiliation ordinance.
Good work on that.
Do we have new projects? Do we have new customers kind of applying for city water and sewer because of this? Or has anybody like jumped out of because of this?
No. Which isn't to say, uh, if you were the town of St. Albans, it isn't to say that the presence of the affiliation fee didn't have a chilling impact. Um, I think projects have continued to come online in anticipation of this, you know, it, it did moil more to impact the relationship between the city and the town than specific projects, I think, you know, and you know, there were a handful of people who were never told about the affiliation fee when they bought their house. And so those, you know, for those dozen people, it was a major impact. But it never impacted the rate of development, I don't think.
Although, a number, it's, it, there's been a reprieve for a number of businesses who, who were paying yet. They're very appreciative of the fact that it sets a, you know, business environment, a little bit more of a business environment. Because that was gonna be ongoing for years.
Right.
And now they're, I know, um, one building that I was familiar with, they were saving thirty thousand a year.
I was just curious, first of all, I've always been for the more we can, uh, share services with the town seems to be smart. I was just curious if, do, is there a proactive way to encourage people to switch over to our water set, does more customers mean more revenue? And less burden for everybody, you know, similar to the police? If so, do we, you know, I know, like, I work at Bayside, I know Bayside would love to be on city water, you know? Is there, is it a correlation, more income, less burden, or, you know, more people, more problems, more bills, more?
Yes, yes. But you always, in government and in public service, you always want economies of scale. You always want to deliver in the most compact service area possible, right? The impediments for expanding water and wastewater is, and even under this ordinance, uh, if the service line ends here, uh, and the, uh, trunk line ends here and you need, and you have a house here, you gotta pay to extend it, right? And that's still the case. But over the long haul, it's far better, uh, to be on city water and sewer. Somebody like Bayside, they're just too far down, right? They need everybody else along the way.
Yeah.
But I had someone Fairfax reach out, Fairfax Street, their neighbor, city, their town, the neighbor has water septic and they'd love to go on. That would be options for them.
Yeah, that'd be options, I mean Marty and I have conversations like that all the time. You know, the question a lot of times becomes, well, the person who had the house right next door paid twenty grand to extend the line and they don't wanna just let you hook on for free. You know? Um, but, you know, all of that, that's really in the weeds, you know, the, 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 the beauty of this agreement is for the first time in a hundred years, the city and the town have found a way to work together, I mean, it's a legacy agreement, right? You know, it's, uh, and it plays to our strengths for each community, so.
And when does the, remind me when the police?
July one.
July one? And are we looking good for the officers we need?
Yeah, we're, we're looking great on staffing, you know, I just, um, got an email from, um, well, let me just read it to you.
Because I know they just welcomed a new officer, so.
Yeah, that was Rosita.
That's right.
And, uh, you know, so we've been, we've been, um, we've been paying some bonuses for folks to get them to choose us, uh, as opposed to some other departments, uh, and, um, one of the folks we just hired is a, uh, a pre-cert, so he's pre-certified, um, is almost done with his, uh, level three, uh, certification, uh, through the Police Academy. Uh, and, um, just bought a house on Fairfield Street. So, um, you know, the, another officer we're in the process of recruiting for the Street Crimes Unit, uh, has a signing bonus, um, and then has an incentive, uh, to buy a house a little bit closer. Right, he's over in the far, far part of the state, right, so.
So you think we're in good shape for July one?
Yeah, I mean, I, I think operationally on the patrol side, uh, we're in good shape, we're in better shape this July one than we were last July one. When we were just covering the city.
Yeah, good.
Any other questions for Tom? Any questions from the audience on this? Seeing none, uh, all those in favor of repealing the affiliation ordinance?
We didn't make a motion.
Actually, yeah, we need a motion first.
Do you need a motion?
Second reading, we'll take a motion, this is just first reading. So, so you can pass a motion to accept it at first reading.
Oh, I'll make that motion to accept the first reading of the affiliation ordinance repeal.
Motion by Trudy, second by Eric. Any further questions? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
And opposed. Hearing none, so first reading, uh, moves on, we'll have the second one in July, I imagine. Now we'll move to the city ma- uh, manager report or update.
Um, most of these, since we've talked about already, um, enterprise fund budgets, um, are usually done in June, we're gonna do those in July. Um, and the finance chair can be, be here. Um, they've been reviewed by the finance committee and so we're on schedule to, uh, have those in front of you next month. Public Safety Forum is a week from tomorrow. The, uh, it's been advertised, uh, we hit social media a lot today. There'll be some printed advertising and some more, uh, social media, uh, advertising and sharing as well. Five speakers, uh, the mayor, Representative McCarthy, Chief Lamoth, uh, state's attorney, uh, Brad Cren- Crenchfeld, uh, and Samantha Weber, who's our embedded crisis worker from NCSS. Uh, we continue to reach out to, um, retired members of the judiciary and, uh, seeking a participant from that, um, sector of the government, and if we're able to get success, we can welcome them.
Emerson, blank to, is he able to?
And, uh, Emerson Lynn, uh, will be the moderator, so.
And a Zoom option.
Uh, we will have a Zoom option, uh, to observe.
Right, okay.
You know, I think we'll coordinate that with our public access stations and, you know, there's been a lot of media on it already, so.
Okay.
I don't know, I don't think that should be an issue.
My hope is we'll have more than just one person signing into that.
I'm gonna try, I'm so sad I can't be here. And you have reached out, or do you want to, uh, lawmakers, senators, representatives, is that?
Yeah, we'd like all of them to be, you know, anybody who's a polit- policymaker in Franklin County, I think's gonna wanna be there, so.
So will we, will the city extend an invitation to them, like a?
Uh, we certainly can.
I think it's a good idea.
I think so.
Yeah, can we do that?
Yep.
By we, I mean, someone at City Hall.
Yeah, we'll make sure they'll.
And then, will you, will you reach out to Bill Kimble?
Yeah.
Yeah, maybe the principals at the schools too. Because when you talk about consequences and responsibility, sometimes, yeah, that goes right down to the school.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Angela's a replacement for my name, right?
Yeah, Christina Boyce, she's a teacher at the school, yeah.
Yeah.
And I believe, I believe that, yeah.
Chad.
Would you ask someone from the distorted justice center come? As part of the public safety?
Uh, yeah.
And also maybe Melinda to talk about petition.
I think they wanted to keep the panel, when you do a forum like that, pretty small.
I, I guess my, from my perspective, the concern is, I mean, distorted justice has a place in, in this discussion. Because if nothing else, as, um, you know, and get earlier intervention for like particularly with the kids and stuff like that before you start getting into, um, the legal process. And so maybe it's like to, you know, at least introduce that into the discussion. But I mean, but you're right, Trudy, I mean, it's gonna have a cast of thousands be a part of the panel.
I would certainly hope that we could have a lot of those people there in the audience, maybe just stand up and speak or ask questions if they.
Well, I, I mean, I can ask questions, but I think there's a, a value in having a story. The city, I mean, the city is connected to the story of justice. And, um, to, so that people understand that it isn't just the easy, easy way out. I mean, that, that there is accountability, there is, um, there are consequences. And there, it's, it's done in a different way. It also sometimes only gives victims a more of a voice in what's happening than the, you know, stuff on James Street, um, place. Unfortunately on James Street.
Thank you, Dan. Uh, Fonda?
Fonda RFP, um, should be out by the end of next week, um, and, um, we're really excited to see what that shakes loose from a, um, market rate housing development perspective, so. Um, it's the first time that we've been able to marry our development package, um, which de-risks the, the land and the development cost with financing package and, um, VHFA has, um, made ten million bucks available to us for the project that's, you know, about half the cost of any other project tomorrow, so. Um, I think that could change, could change the way we do development in Vermont for projects like this, so we're pretty excited about that.
Is the groundbreaking coming up for one of the, the first place, right?
And so the ground- groundbreaking is for the, um, the Cathedral Square Plaza.
Yeah, I think it's key to keep reinforcing market rate on that, on that project.
Yeah.
And the first, the groundbreaking is for the fifty-five, the senior housing.
Senior housing.
Place, which is great.
And so, I, I stay with the Fonda because it's in my bad charge. So, um, who are you targeting to, to, uh, develop?
As a developer?
All right, well, the developer, but also, I mean, for what the Chinese like, you're talking about Lake Street, about, um, do you anticipate the rentals for the, for?
Yeah, the, we use terms like workforce housing and market rate housing to mean this is the median rents for the area for people that have jobs. It's primarily young people, it's primarily single units, ones and twos, ones with a den. Advocates will say that that's still too high. That, uh, for prevailing jobs, uh, in Franklin County, you need to lower it further still. There's a place for that, we've done a lot of that, we've done a hundred and twenty units of that. What we haven't done is folks for people that nets rung up, right? And, um, we have, we're gonna see what comes in from the developers, you know, but, um, we'd like this to be primarily people who are, the, the vision for it is young working people in Franklin County. It's not, you know, it's not family housing for the most part, right, you know, it's, it's a lot like the middle main apartments. So.
Thank you.
Yeah.
And so, and like?
That's, and all of that's, that's the vision, right? Have to see what comes in.
But the first wave is fifty-five and older, the first wave is, yeah.
Sure. I just wanna point out that that was your Jack Nicholson quote from A Feel Good Man. We use terms like core, honor.
Wow, that's good.
That's where, that's where my mind went as soon as you said that.
That's funny, that's funny.
We use terms like honor.
Core.
Sorry to get off track there a little bit.
I was just worried it was gonna be one flew over the cook and was missing.
I'm not quite as well-versed on that one. We're moving on to item number eight, which is the appointment of, uh, one of our representatives to the Northwest Regional Planning Commission. Chad or Marie?
Yeah, I think, I think we had a discussion about it last meeting, Chip, I think you talked to her and everything's cool on your end, so.
Yep.
Cool with making a motion. Unless you guys have anything else to. Uh, I moved to appoint Elizabeth Nance to the Northwest Regional Planning Commission.
Second.
Second by Trudy, any further discussion? On that committee was Chad, Marie, and Eric, thank you.
And her term's going to expire on, uh, June thirty of twenty twenty-seven, is that correct?
That's the recommendation.
That's the recommendation, yeah.
Okay, any questions for the interviewing committee? Hearing none, all those in favor of appointing Elizabeth Nance to the Regional Planning Commission, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed, motion passes. I think Elizabeth is on with us, so Elizabeth, uh, thank you for joining us and, uh, you have a new title for your resume.
So I did wanna, um, apologize for maybe my inartful, um, comments when I met with some of the city council. So I did wanna apologize for maybe my inartful comments when I met with some of the city council members. I think some of it was frustration representing Swanton and some other communities. But do know that I understand that I represent St. Albans City and its best interests. And I will do that to the best of my ability.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And if you don't, you'll be in big trouble.
You know where I live and work, so yes.
Oh, for the record, I've recused from that vote because Elizabeth did work for me. All right, we're gonna move on to item number seven, which is consider a loan amendment for the Kingman Street project.
We were able to get, I mean, Kingman Street was nearly completed two years ago. We've been chasing DDC for paperwork on expanding some of the loans that we use for the project. So this, this looks like a clean new loan agreement, but it's actually an amendment with seventy, about $73,000 added to that loan amount. The previous one was 290,000.
So we're at what now?
Three. 363,316.38 cents.
Any additional needs for what?
We were able to turn, access, we were able to access loan forgiveness and turn it into additional financing. Rather than, and just basically use that to take the full loan and then have the additional loan forgiveness as a grant on top of that instead.
And any questions for Chip? Hearing none, I'd entertain a motion to.
I'll make a motion to consider the loan agreement, amendment for the Kingman Street project.
I'll second that.
Motion by Trudy, second by Eric, any further questions for Chip? Hearing none, all those in favor of the amendment, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, Chip, you have your loan amendment approval.
This one has two places for every counselor to sign and a third place just for you, Tim.
Thank you, Tim.
Thank you for all the little stickers.
Just for the record, because I'm signing three times, I will get a higher stipend.
Oh.
Than the rest of you.
But I'm signing on the first one, so take that.
We'll triple it.
I just wanted to be transparent. We're gonna move into mayor's report. I really don't have much, I thought the folks that were here really spoke to our issues. As I said, I appreciate them coming in. I'm excited to move those discussions forward and come out with some, I wouldn't say solutions, but some some plans to help address some of these issues. As I stated, it's disturbing to hear a lot of that and if we lose Food City west side of town, it will be, it will be a huge hit for, for the community. Because that does provide very valuable access to, to the food available.
Especially with the housing going in there, extra housing, and I know that from the Holy Angels housing, a lot of them, a lot back and forth all the way.
As I said, I think, I think that's the council's priority moving ahead. I don't think it's, I think it's quite obvious that will be our priority moving forward. And we will work to address. And we hope to address their concerns. Trudy, I'll turn it over to you.
All right. I attended the Pride event in the park. It was fantastic, there was, there were a lot of people there, there was a great turnout, everyone seemed to be in really good spirits. It was a wonderful event, hopefully it will grow next year. I had, some people on Bank Street were curious about the apartment that burned, the triplex. They had heard that there were going to still be three apartments, but that each apartment would have three bedrooms. Is that in fact something that you can share? Is that true or not? Because if it's true, there's a big concern that the size of the building that has three, three bedroom apartments would be too much for that neighborhood.
I'd have to look at the zoning record for that, the zoning doesn't regulate number of bedrooms or really count the number of bedrooms. So I'd have to follow up with you on that.
Okay. The square footage though, would have to remain the same, or could it be a bigger place?
It could be a bigger place within the allowable footprint of the lot.
Okay, so you and I can connect on that?
Yep.
And there is, if that is the case and there are concerns, there is appeals, there's a voice for the neighbors?
No, under the new state law, it's a permitted use, so.
There's no voice?
Yeah, under the new state laws that, that they passed out of all years, permitted use.
That's the law that we didn't like, as a city, right?
Yeah, it's been, it's been posted for 15 days and we feel we're gonna.
That's the law.
Right there.
Okay, so yeah, let's connect on that, that would be great.
Yep.
Any updates on the fence for the dog park? You know I'm not gonna let that dog park go. Do you need anything from me, rather?
Yeah. I think the fence issue will come back.
Okay, okay.
And they know that, I said, no fences for FY25.
Okay. And lastly, are there signs at Hardak that say no tempting, no overnight? Because I believe that that's the rule, correct?
Christmas has no camping sign up there.
So I just.
There is a few.
Okay, might wanna invest in some more signs, just in case.
There were many posted years ago that have since deterred long time, but I think I still have some.
I just know that I frequent Hardak a lot, as do a lot of other people and it would be a concern if we started seeing some trickle over into that park. It just, it makes people feel vulnerable.
I totally get it.
Because people are walking alone with their dogs a lot, so.
Mostly that's on the Alvis Hillside, Hardak pretty got it under control.
Yeah, so I don't know.
Chip, if you don't care where it is.
I'm not. They were just the alummies that you saw.
Okay, that's right, I just wanted to make sure, I think we need to keep an eye, okay, good. Okay, that's it, I took, I took my timing to Parkin's time.
Eric?
Yeah, just, I attended the Pride Festival also this last weekend, it was a great event. I think that just the sheer number of people in the park was absolutely amazing. And the parade was bigger than I expected for the first year, to see that much color and just great presentation, honestly. We had an abatement hearing I attended this month, as well as my first I've done, it's an interesting experience, to understand more about that as well. And then the CEO Yo meeting where we learned a lot about the homelessness definition and how that program works, so it's been great. For our block wise, we got a block party coming up in a month from the 14th of this month, so it's July 14th. It's 11 to 3, but 12 to 2, we actually have a live musician coming. But NEFQ and the SCCU donated a little bit to help the musicians, it was great. So people are invited to come up and hang out, have fun, thanks to Public Works and Recreation. Recreation's bringing along lawn games and stuff for that, so that's gonna be big. Upper Walden, I want to thank PD and Public Works and their efforts on Upper Walden. PD's been doing studies on Upper Walden for speeding, which I appreciate. And Public Works continues to look at how we're gonna fix some of the problems, including the intersection, Barlow and Public. But Barlow and Upper Walden, as well as a couple of the more nasty potholes on that road. So that's gonna help make those owners a lot happier. And I do wanna speak, public safety thing is important, it hits all of us. My car had, about a month ago had been gone through. We had a camera, they went through and found one of the doors was unlocked, first time my partner's done that and she's never unlocked, loser car unlocked, the one time ever. And then about a week ago, my neighbor's GPS was taken up her car, so we definitely, it's close to her heart and I definitely have this as a priority on my list as well. So that's the last thing I have, yeah, thank you.
Well, I gotta ask a question, small, I've been getting it over my house from these homeless. Is any regulations on that?
Fires?
There's no regulations that uniquely apply to them. Right now, you are allowed to have backyard campfires in the city. It's been a topic of discussion from time to time, but you know, it's always come down to we want people to be able to do that.
Do they need to be contained?
Six inches down or, or 10 inches down, six inches up, something like that.
Yeah, you know, there's a point at which it gets to be too big, but you know, I think you know, as regards the tent city, that was an accomplishment moving, relocating those folks.
Yeah.
As part of that though, we've been in contact with any number of landlords who are property owners who experience any overflow, right? And so, a lot of them are beginning to tighten up the net as well on their property. So I think we're gonna begin to see some of that begin to go away.
Okay, and I got one for, where's Marty? I gotta go in there, see now. Hey, I got a call from Mike Saunders the other day, well, about a month ago. Up and coming off Lake Street, you had them called, they're sitting there, they've been here for a while.
On Lake, on the top of Lake?
Yeah.
The building at the corner is having some brick restoration.
Okay, but that's still across the street.
Being that they had the light, lamp post last night.
It's the streetlight that we still won't get a call back on the replacement, there's still.
I just thought of mentioning it to you again.
Yeah, there was an accident there about a year ago that took out the streetlight and the sign. Waiting for the streetlight to come in.
Okay, if I get a call, I'll be insured on, I'll tell her what's the situation.
Yep.
Thanks, anyhow, you do a good job, I gave you good ratings to your brother the other day.
That'll mean a lot.
Marie?
Well, I did receive a complaint actually from Deb who spoke tonight about this group of kids. I too have seen those kids hanging on the, on that corner, the cell in North Elm. They're all over the road on their bikes, cars coming, they occupy both sides of the road and don't move. So they are a bit of an issue. Also, we are still continuing to have, nothing's changed, if anything, I think it's gotten worse. Excessive speeding on North Elm. I swear, some days it's like they go by 80 miles an hour. Both vehicles and motorcycles. And it doesn't matter what time of the, of the day it is. It can be, I've seen it in the afternoon, I've seen it in the evenings, in the middle of the night, it's, it's, it's terrible. So I'm kinda hoping that maybe the police department can start patrolling that a little more. I mean, they could park one evening in my driveway and probably catch 50 people, so.
What time are they driving by?
Oh, I, I see this happen in the, in the afternoons, I see this happen in the evenings, early evening, later evening, middle of the night. And it's, it's continuous and it's, it's picked up more than I've ever seen.
What's your address, Marie?
23 North Elm.
I, I would echo that even across, like, all across the city, speeding is out of hand. And I remember when I first started to drive, they would park right on Fairfield Street and they would get so many people speeding. And, and then word got out that you don't wanna speed on Lake Street because you're gonna get a ticket. So I think a little bit of a, some deterrents would be good, yeah.
They, they used to park behind Holy Angels Church, but they, they would park, so of course the minute you turn a corner, you'd see them right there, so you'd, oops. But.
We could pad the police budget for all those bonuses to get people.
We can't, we need to discuss that with the police advisory board. But, I mean, this is the challenge, right, and you heard it mentioned here, right?
Right.
We've redirected everything to all these issues and the quality of life stuff is really hard to keep up with.
Yes, yeah, I, I get it, you know, I, I do. In addition to the speeding, there are, I mean, I have several nights I just can't sleep. And there are people walking the street in the middle of the night, well, you know, they aren't just out for my swat. So that's probably judgmental on my part, but it's incredible the number of people that are out in the street in the middle of the night, all hours again. So I think a little cruising back and forth wouldn't hurt. Last thing I have is, is there gonna be a possibility that we get to tour the Lake Street building when it's completed? I would like to see it.
Yeah, absolutely.
Yeah, okay.
So do we have any more of the quiet ride? Cause we could tape over, we could, we could tape over the quiet, sorry, we could slow your ride.
We just get the yellow children's signs all over now, yeah.
Slow your ride.
No, but that has the opposite of that.
All right, Jack, last but not least?
All right, I'm probably gonna sound a little bit like a broken record, but I walk out front of Marie's house late at night most nights. Shouting to your friends. No, but I do walk around town a lot, we walk, me and my girlfriend, sometimes us individually, we walk with the dog, we walk with the baby. We work late, so we work at night and it's definitely becoming harder to walk in a space, especially her by herself, that she's feeling safe. There's people kind of sleeping on sidewalks, I don't know if we have ordinance. I know other big cities have ordinances about sleeping on public sidewalks. It's not just in the downtown area, I think there's a gentleman here from Diamond Street that's frustrated. I live pretty much right across from Diamond Street, there's people sleeping. You know, there was a person sleeping on the corner of Diamond and Lincoln the other day.
Church, Alcoa, and Church Street.
So it's definitely feeling less and less safe. And I've talked to a couple business owners. When I was working on Kingman Street downtown, one thing that really helped, and it was a different problem, but kind of same, what really helped was having, and I know we were enacting the street team, but as much foot patrol as you can in like those areas, like probably like around, you know, the building where people are congregating at the door, the more time, the more in the summertime that you can get officers out of the cruiser, interacting, I think it has three times the effect, probably 10 times the effect. And maybe that's, you know, for the, you know, the community police board or whatever. But I definitely think that in the summer, given what's going on, people roaming around, people's kinda sleeping in public. I think at one point, you know, the city cops used to, after they get done chilling out on Kingman Street, they'd walk the city and check doors to make sure, make sure they were locked and blah, 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 blah. So.
That's still happening.
Yeah, I'm sure it is, but the more we can do it, I think it's, you know, person X is sleeping right in the middle of Main Street, people are comfortable. I think more and more people are hanging out in the park, you know.
The port lights.
Yeah, I think it's, I think it's time to just get more, more people out of the cruisers walking around. That's, that's all I got.
Do we have a sense of how many people who are unhoused are trying to get into the shelter, but it's full? And how many people aren't interested or aren't eligible to be in the shelter, do you know what I mean? Like, of the population, like what, how many? Do you have a sense of how many of those folks are just really looking for a place to live? Not in, or trying to get in the shelter or apartment or, you know what I'm saying? Not very eloquent.
No, I think they're detracting that, right?
I mean, I don't have any data, any quantitative data. You know, there's a I think we're more comfortable talking about housing than we are about addiction.
I think we're more comfortable talking about housing than we are about addiction. And everybody that I've met over the last month as we've rolled up our sleeves, they're not candidates for housing, they're candidates for treatment.
But refuse.
They refuse, you know, as we've talked about over here, because there's no coercive measure like an arrest, right? But the tough thing about this problem, yeah, is Dom the city manager not down on Sunday morning, right? But the tough thing about this problem is the more resources you throw at it, the worse it gets, right? Like, we could, that's what happened in Sears Lane in Burlington, right? You know, we, we could provide a space for all these folks to go, twenty of them, and then it'd be thirty.
And then it'd be forty.
You know, and so it's a hard thing to attack from a compassionate perspective in the space that we find ourselves in right now, you know, so.
But that would help housing, not addiction.
Well, we could, you know, that's, that's what Sears Lane was.
Really?
Sears Lane was a response that said, we're gonna give a place for people to go. And it just got out of hand, right? And so.
We did that, we did that ourselves, we left Food City alone.
Left, yeah.
We weren't experiencing the issues, and then we were.
You know, I, there's a great, there's a great podcast, you know, I've talked to some of you about this recently. Ezra Klein interviews Obama's drug expert, right, about what works. And he's the one that's talking about the need for coercive measures. And we're not doing these addicts any favors. On some level, right? It's not okay to live in a tent and steal to fill your addiction. And when we provide support implicitly, that's what we're saying, right? When we tolerate it, that's what we're saying. And that's, the community is rising up and saying, it's not okay for this to continue. And our systems have to figure out how we're gonna respond and adjust to it. And our systems won't respond, our policy maker won't respond until things like tonight happen.
The man that spoke tonight about his sister.
Yeah.
That was very impactful.
Yeah.
What he said.
And that's a specific example, that's, that's the same theme we're just talking about here, right?
And we had someone that works for CEOE said the same thing, that he would, if he hadn't gone to jail, he would have been in a terrible place right now. And now he's success.
Yeah.
Kingman had two overdoses over the weekend, right, or last week?
Not fatalities, but ODs, that's what all the stuff the people were talking about was.
But there was no meth lab bus, you know, because that was all of the social, I'm gonna clear that up, there wasn't.
I never, I didn't hear anything about a meth lab.
There's been three people brought up and me asking about it, I said, no.
But what you're gonna see, you know, when we ramp up the street carnage unit, people talked about not liking seeing their neighbor's house get raided. There's gonna be a lot more of that, that's what we gotta get comfortable with, we gotta look at that as a success.
Well, I, I think the other piece of this is the landlord governance.
Yeah, you have to work on that.
Another piece of the puzzle. And I'll use, I'm not saying I'm a shining star, but in our neighborhood, we had one of those houses and I ended up buying it and we have an issue since.
But landlords don't even know if there's a drug bust at their house, there's no mechanism in place.
Or they do and they're complicit with it.
Right, but I think a lot of these landlords don't live here, so they don't know and I think that they would want to know. Or maybe not.
But we do have one landlord in my ward that has the complicit situation.
Oh, yeah.
It's just not acceptable.
What, what is it that BART does? The BART, the facility on South Main, is that just to give addicts a medication to?
Do nothing on that?
Help them?
To wean off.
Get off their craving for it? So there's no real treatment, so to say?
No, it's treatment, I mean, that's the T.
It just helps them like wean off of it, I think?
You know, we could get, you know, frankly, it'd be good to get them in to talk with you about, about, I'm sure they'd be happy to come meet with us.
But that's not like, what Burlington is proposing is like a, a safe place to go and use your legal drugs?
Yes.
Yeah.
Under the supervision of medical professionals.
Yeah.
Speaking of like, to what Chad talked about, we used to have the Yellow Shirt Polo. Were they just park patrol? I feel like they're, the parkers are a lot more accessible and clean and like less of the trauma, more eyes out there. Are they still doing it?
They were at Hilton last year.
Hilton was a, was a rec employee that was down there.
I'm just taking the eyes we have to help PD because they're already stretched to say like, hey, they have radios, I know they do. Hey, we see something going on, walk away, can you get over here? It's faster than the citizen trying to correct who to call and how long it takes to get through and stuff.
Yeah, I mean, we've, and we've, we've got a year-round person dedicated towards, ostensibly towards parking, he's gonna be a civilian. But he'll be a presence in those garages, in the congressman man garage, and so, you know.
I think at the forum, I appreciated when some of the folks were talking tonight, like a solutions-based approach. Like, I think we need to listen to people, obviously, and, and hear from the, the policy and the decision-makers, but also like, what, what can we do? I think that's what the folks wanna know.
I was gonna talk to Doc.
What can we do?
We need to come out with a...
What's the plan?
Not necessarily that night we come out, but we, who's in charge of the public safety committee?
Quality of life?
Quality of life, yeah, I'll let you, okay.
Like a solutions-based.
I think we wanna, not, like I said, not that night, but we wanna meet soon after and come up with a game plan and start to document what, what we wanna do.
The one thing we need to get into the conversation, didn't come out tonight, is the bail statute, right? And that, you, you alluded to it when you said there's some things you're gonna hear too, but we gotta introduce that, you know, into the record. And there are, you know, we should, your point's well taken that we should workshop it, try to be solutions-based.
Yeah. Because we can talk about the same thing like for hours and hours, but what are we gonna do?
People need to see a response.
Right?
And a reduction.
Well, they deserve it.
Question, question, is it, today they go in, no bail, no nothing, now?
Yeah. Site, site release.
I commend all those people that spoke tonight. That was a very orderly group. Everybody, nobody went, went over the top, they all just expressed their fears or their, their situations, life situations, like the guy that lost his, his sister. I just, I, I think they were all fantastic in how they presented themselves, how they handled themselves. And I think this was worth millions right here tonight. And, and I'm hoping that they too will all show up next Tuesday along with a whole gang of people. That, that's what we need, that's what we need.
I think in the world of lot of keyboard warriors out there, it's very... Well, no, I began to see Sol this room full at once, I was like, actually getting goosebumps, so it's really good to see that.
Alright, let's wrap it up. Going to item number ten, entertain a motion to approve minutes from five thirteen twenty-four.
So moved, second.
Motion is second, any corrections, amendments, changes? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Hearing none, the motion passes to approve minutes from five thirteen. We now consider approval of warrant from five thirty-one, is our motion?
I'll do it again?
I'll do it.
Now, second, I get it.
Keep it easy, Dr. Martin.
Second, Derek, me too.
Okay.
Any questions on the warrant? Hearing none, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Motion passes. Thank you all, entertain a motion to adjourn.
I second that one.
So moved, you could have made the motion in the middle.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all. Good meeting, thank you.